Welcome to the Franklin Board of Education meeting for September 27, 2023. Meeting has been properly posted. Could we get a roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Sprague?
Here.
Dr. Beer?
Here.
Mrs. Wackowski is excused. Dr. Kahn?
Here.
Mrs. Sapersky?
Here.
Mrs. Yank?
Here.
We are all present.
Thank you. Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I got it.
You got it?
Yeah. Thank you.
I just was looking for the basket.
All right, I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is made by Mrs. Larson, seconded by Dr. Kahn. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Community comment. We only have one person signed up. Jackie Myers, please. Three minutes, please. It could be less than that, too.
I bet y'all got me shooting up from the brain.
Right?
Um, hello, I'm Jackie Myers. Most of you are coming from last year as well as from the latest email that I sent to you on Monday. I appreciate the prompt response from Ms. Bennen and Mr. Ekman.
I'm speaking to you this evening, as I did in my email to you, on behalf of many of the parents of children with special needs at Franklin Public Schools. In the event that you are not aware, we meet regularly in person, as well as frequent conversations via group chats. So please know, I am speaking for the families of elementary, middle, and the high school, not just my own daughter. So in response to both of your emails, I'm not requesting a personal meeting to merely discuss Gabriella, my daughter, but rather, it's for the entire special education body of students. In response to Ms. Bennen's email, I have several points, the first being, of course, expectations were not met. We expected to be fully staffed by the start of the school year. We expected FPS, Franklin Public Schools, to have started the restructuring of the Education Department and budget to pay staff more appropriately and effectively, potentially weeding out unnecessary high-salaried positions. As mentioned in the past, the current structure is very top-heavy. We expected Franklin to become the one sought-after district for employment, not settling for relatively competitive, as Ms. Bennen had stated. Parents of special-needs children started meeting regularly about their experiences last fall. And then we began speaking publicly in this room in January, not spring. So that's just for the record in regard to response to the email. So it has been one year's time that many of these same specific problems have been so notable within the school setting that parents are at wits' end and have been discussed with their teachers, case managers, and principals, trying to figure out solutions, and then brought to your attention, finally, because the problems are not being solved, sometimes not even addressed. Third point, I personally do get the updates of the things being initiated, such as a new parent liaison, more communications from case managers, systematic approach to communication, et cetera. While these are great, these items are not addressing the obvious. The blaring problem, shortages of EAs, which continues to get worse with the subpar pay and lack of benefits. Isn't it true that what was already mentioned about our current staff being required to fill the many EA gaps at the EA rate of pay when they do so? That's not right. And more importantly, our kids should not have someone who you can just check the box, that a body was present in their classroom, which is what was happening. Our children deserve to have their needs met consistently by trained individuals who have been in regular communication with the class categorical teacher or case manager. It is clear that the work environment for staff that are being forced to do more at less pay incentive will result in even more shortages as they will not stay in their current positions, hemorrhaging more staff. It is a well-known fact that current teachers are leaving the profession at the highest rates ever. Franklin, you can do better. Fourth point, personally, I have regular communications with Clara Bastian and Kate Kenny, my daughter's assistant principal and case manager. They're both very well-aware of my personal concerns and frustrations. We communicate regularly. I trust that they are trying. They were not included in the email I sent because they are not the playmakers. You all are. Regarding outside advisors, we would still like to know, are there plans of hiring any? And enclosure, I want to say that we want to see more from Franklin to fix the problems that we have continuously mentioned to you. We've been respectful, courteous, patient, and hopeful that we could get our problems solved in this manner of our behaviors. Please exercise due diligence within your positions and make Franklin the school district that it once was. Thank you.
Thank you. Did anybody else sign in late? All right, thank you. We'll go on to looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion was made by Mrs. Sapersky, seconded by Mrs. Yank. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. School board calendar. There is a regular Board of Education meeting Wednesday, October 11, 2023. A key communicators meeting Wednesday, October 18, 2023, at the ECC at 5:00. And a regular Board of Education meeting Wednesday, October 25, 2023, at the ECC at 6:00. District administrator update, Mrs. Bennen, please.
All right, good evening. It's nice to see all of you at the parade this afternoon and a lot of you in the audience. So we are a little damp, but it was good to see the spirit and the different floats that were made for the school spirit that's going on this week with Homecoming Week. On top of that, things we have to look forward to next week, we have our employee pulse survey and our student pulse survey going on. So as we're pretty familiar with our coherence plan, a big section of it is our engagement with all of our stakeholder groups. These are two moments next week in time that we measure where we're at with our staff and students in particular. We also do a community or family survey that we're familiar with that comes out in the spring. So looking forward to those coming back and being a part of our next plan in our three-year coherence plan that we're working on. This Friday, we have our Professional Development Day. This is one of six that we hold during the school year. We're looking forward to hosting all district staff at the middle school in the morning for a similar format to last year of aligning our standards, looking at our instructional framework, and then having some choice. In PD, that staff has choice around things aligned to the coherence plan. In the afternoons, they'll be back in their building, working with their school improvement teams and their administrators. So we're thankful to our parents that work out childcare for those days. We know it's hard to have six days that we do that, but it is extremely beneficial for our staff, especially with the shortage of substitutes. It's harder to pull staff to try to do PD. I'd like to thank all of the Pleasant View staff today. We've had some water leakage in the school and about midday had to relocate after lunch all of our students to Southbrook Church. We're very thankful to Pastor Jonathan Miseryan and all of his staff. He probably had about 10 people on site, extremely organized. We were able to, thankfully, right way was able to get us buses on short notice, transport all of our students over there. They stayed in their classroom cohorts. We had people hooking up their Apple TVs so they could be projecting lessons. There were second graders studying for social studies. It was just pretty neat to see that the environment changed, but the learning and the care that was going on was still there. So a big shout-out to Southbrook Church and all of their staff, Ashley Imperiali and her staff at PV, Andy Daniels and his team that spent the whole day at the school at Pleasant View. It's up and ready for tomorrow. It's being cleaned right now. So we're excited for that, too, that we're not missing instruction there tomorrow. I think that's everybody to thank, our district team. Everybody was out and about either at PV or at Southbrook, sorry, greeting our students. So thank you for everybody on that. And looking forward to tonight, just continuing discussions about our facilities and our next steps as a community and what we want to do in those areas. So thank you.
Thank you, and I'd like to add that Mr. Miseryan sent a thank-you note. Well, Annalee sent a thank-you note to him, of course, and he sent one back. And part of what it says is, "It truly was our pleasure to serve this way. Our community only becomes stronger when we all work together like this. What stood out to me was the professionalism of the staff, the way the district employees flexed, adapted, and then continued teaching." Watching Principal Imperiali at the end, thank your team, rally them, and then give them directions was inspiring. But truly how Mrs. Bennen and Dr. Moe lead in setting a culture of excellence, this is what has filtered down. Organizations always reflect the character of their leaders. So that's just in part, but thank you very much, everyone, for helping all our students. So, sorry, you didn't know I was going to do that. Hope I properly embarrassed you. So thank you. We'll move on to reports, presentations, and other school board business. Seclusion and restraint report, Mr. Ekman, please.
Thank you. So this is my first opportunity to speak with the board. Unfortunately, seclusion restraint is not a very fun topic to talk about. But I just, the report is shared, and I wanted to just highlight a few points to talk about with the board. First of all, I think it's important that the school board knows that within the last several years, the law around seclusion restraint has been updated at the state level. And I think there's a few, in the report, there's a few highlights pointed out about those changes. But just to summarize, they boil down to changes in the reporting requirements. And the intent around that really is to increase the visibility of parents, school boards, and DPI to incidents of seclusion and restraint in the schools. So those are some significant changes in the law. The other area that is, represents a major change is that there are additional meetings required for school staff to debrief and process when there's an incident at the school of seclusion or restraint. And those meetings, also, IEP meetings are required after the second incident of seclusion and restraint. So those are some pretty big changes in the law that went into effect in 2020. And school districts have been required to comply with that law. And there wasn't a lot of visibility to that. That happened during a major health crisis, and our attention was kind of focused elsewhere. The definitions are also clarified in the report, just to be very specific about what is meant by an instance of an incident and seclusion and restraint. And then the other part that I just want to highlight are the mitigating measures that Franklin Public Schools takes to avoid and reduce the use of seclusion and restraint in the schools. And then the data is included for the 22-23 school year, as well as some of the historical data. So just wanted to emphasize those points, and I can try to take some questions.
Does anybody have any questions?
You know, what was the reason all of a sudden for Robinwood to have and jump in the number of restraints and seclusions?
So there could be a number of different factors. I really can't speak to specific student causes of some of that because starting to describe that may require me to disclose specific information about students. But I can share that when there are lots of incidents that require staff to come together and review the data, look for patterns and trends, and then do some follow-up to try to put a plan in place or update an IEP if it's a student with a disability, but to try to mitigate the use of seclusion restraint so that it doesn't become a pattern.
Because I see that from, so Southwood Glen, they have really improved on the numbers, at least, you know, looking at the number, it up itself. But all of a sudden, Robinwood standing out. So is this a more of a staffing issue or is it the personnel, you know?
Yeah, I don't have an answer for that question specifically, but it is something to keep an eye on to see if that is a pattern or if it's just a result of last year, staffing or student issues.
What I've seen, my suit is oftentimes it changes from school to school, from year to year. And there doesn't seem to be much rhyme or reason for it, except that there is a student or two that has some sort of issue. But I know that there's been some specific training going on in the last two or three years to try and get the numbers down over the school district. But maybe Dr. Moe could speak more to that or Mrs. Bennen.
It's hard to answer without disclosing information about students. That's what I'll say, right? I think you said it well, Mike. There's sometimes student situations that change how the numbers may or may not look, sometimes not. But you can see there's a drastic difference in year to year, school to school, and you kind of have to add your own thinking behind that. We can't give details because it might, as Mr. Ekman said, reveal something about a kid or kids. And we're not, it's not best practice, but we wouldn't do that anyway, so we can't answer. But you will see them fluctuate. That's not uncommon, that you go from, I think you're looking at Southwood Glen, going from 50 to zero.
I would say, too, like the training, talking about that a little bit, so like staff that's working with students that may be struggling where seclusion or restraint needs to come into place in the school, it's the staff that's trained and qualified in those areas, so that training is revisited each year. But then also, as Mr. Ekman stated, when they're having these meetings right after that we have after an incident, we're talking about, too, like, was there anything we could have done to prevent that, right? We're trying to be least restrictive. And also, is there any additional training that we maybe need to bring into place? And if it is, that's something that it's immediate and takes place. But otherwise, there are specific teams and people trained in schools that are the ones responding and working. And then especially that when we have these incident meetings afterwards, you're trying to look at, like, what is taking place that's getting a student to this level of feeling that we're needing, that we need to step in in that way? And trying to look at, like, what kind of environment or what kind of relationships do they have and with whom? Or we can start to troubleshoot and think about what's a better scenario for next time. But as far as like the training, right, there's people trained every year. It's repeated the training and then specific in buildings. So who are those that we're calling to those situations?
Thank you, Andrew.
Parents are called when this happens?
Yeah, parents get a copy of the incident report, the seclusion restraint report. So that wasn't required in the previous law. That was updated a couple of years ago.
And they're called as the situation is unfolding or not necessarily?
Depends. That would depend on the situation, but they are required to receive the full report afterwards.
I'm just wondering, because one thing that I've learned is that these are, these reports fluctuate from year to year. So a desire on my part to see a downward trend from the use of seclusion and restraint is not the right way to look at success in terms of interpreting this data. So I'm wondering if those of you with experience in this area can give me a way to sort of look at this and say, or is it just something that can't be told with the numbers alone?
Yeah, that's a good question.
Any of y'all? Because this is really all we get, and so for me to be like, okay, I feel good about this.
Right. I can understand what you're saying, right? Like, any data, you want to see improvement. It's a little harder because there are certain scenarios where seclusion or restraint are used. Like, it's really driven by those definitions in law, like Leo spoke about. So you revisit after each one and say, what can we do different? Is there something different? But it just becomes a point where if you're secluding a student, it means themselves or somebody else, there's a threat for safety.
Right.
And you don't have a choice in that. That's where you have to step in. It means you've exhausted all other options. So to say you're going to, more or less, I mean, what we would hope to look at when we can look at individual student data is that you're seeing less through the year because you're finding different strategies or interventions to help. So that's what we look at for student by student, but it is hard to look at year over year.
I didn't know if there was some magic way of interpreting this that I was missing, but it's really just a not-fun report to read because we are necessarily limited to a very high-level, unnuanced view. Yeah? All right.
And you want to report it correctly, right? I want to sit here and say, we're never, ever going to let a student run into traffic, right? Like, we are, someone is always going to.
Right.
So then that happens, and we address that, and then we meet and try to fix it and that, right? Like, there's certain things, so you want to report the numbers. We do.
No, absolutely.
They are what they are, but I would still say downward trend is a fair, overall downward trend in total incidents, I think, would be different than looking at a downward trend school to school. That's what I would look at it, right?
That's a good idea.
You don't want it to be going up, but you would expect a cumulative, hopefully not upward trend with seeing how the numbers jump around. And we were looking at that for a bit. We now provide the first part of the training, the de-escalation part, to everybody in the district. We weren't doing that last year. It was the first year. So.
Given that, it might be useful, then, to include in this report just a total, like, I'm trying to do math quickly by adding up a vertical column, and it's not working, so that might be a useful item to include in the report.
The total, the overall total by?
By the district, yeah. I don't know.
Anyone else? Comment, question? All right, thank you very much. Master facilities study, Mrs. Bennen.
All right. So we have a slide deck to get set up, so we'll just take a second for that. We also have a few guests with us tonight, so Mike Hacker, as you've met, with Cadence Consulting, and Devin and Paige with PRA. Obviously, Andy Daniels is with us, too. They're going to be presenting a bit. If you want to come up to the table, that probably works the best. You have the microphone, then. In front of you also, you have a blue folder. That is a copy of the slide deck that we're going to go through right now and talk through. And then also, a couple of the items in the slide deck are, like, pulled out separate. When I think of organization in my life, there are certain things that maybe hang on the refrigerator or go in that special drawer at the house. Those are probably those other three documents that we'll kind of get to as we go. So last time, we kind of held questions till the end. I think that format might work tonight, but if you have something really burning as we go through this, you know, let's talk about it. It should really be a discussion. A month ago, we were together on August 16, I believe it was, and we shared a lot of data, right? A lot of numbers, the different prioritized needs across the buildings. And as a district, we saw a number, you know, in about the 90 million range, and we were looking at, like, what does this look like as a district? And how do we move forward? And then after that, most of us, six of the seven board members, were able to make school tours that we did on September 11 through all five of our elementary schools and our high school. We didn't tour Forest Park because it's relatively new and there's not as much to see there. We had a solid, I think, almost seven hours together that day already, and it was nice. We did a nice debrief at the end. We've gotten questions along the way that we've been able to answer, too. So as I get going into the presentation and a few guests speak with us also, you're really going to see it should be reflecting all of that debrief, those questions, those inquiries, and then really laying out, like, what are our next steps and what's ahead of us over the next year or so. So on that note, we'll flip ahead. Oh, I have a clicker, so let's see if it's going to work for us.
It is not.
There we go. All right. So since the 16th, just kind of a recap real quick of what we were doing on that day. We had our whole crew of support here with C.D. Smith, with M.D. Roffers, presented on enrollment and what that looks like in the city of Franklin for the next 30-plus years. PRA was here to support that work also, who are familiar with, with past work within the district. And like I said, then we went through our tours. Reminder of the friendly faces in the room, Mike, Devin, and Paige, and then Andy, you've seen more often. So our goals this evening is we're going to debrief what those tours look like, the inquiries that came in, and kind of just get back to a central page of, I tried to pull that together, our team tried to pull that together in a very organized, like, quotable way. We're going to look closer, as requested, at Countrydale, Robinwood, and Franklin High School. So Devin and Paige will go over some of that, along with Andy revisiting the money amounts that align to the work needed. The guiding principles we've talked about, a big reveal of those. You'll see some really familiar language, hopefully. A Gantt chart, so really laying out what's ahead of us and then that timeline, like I said. So jumping into that, we talked a little bit about this already. Who was with us on the tours? Mitch Kidd was also with us. He was with C.D. Smith. Him and his team were the ones that went through and took the bigger look at our master facility study. And then we had a note-taking sheet that day that was in four major areas, so infrastructure, safety and security, educational and learning environments, and then high school-specific was athletic activity space. So the debrief is the next few slides. And this is kind of what the voice of all of us at this table and our partners that have worked with us have, we've gone through the building. So you should see and hear themes here that you brought to this as we debriefed that day. So I would say in our infrastructure, I'm not going to read word-for-word for you, but in the area of roofs, among us, we had a common understanding that we have a good amount of roofs that need replacement, if not sections, whole roofs, and then also some shared concern about, we're at this point now with multiple potentially on the table, how do we maybe spread that out moving forward so we're not setting people up for that 30 years down the line? Which I appreciate that maybe none of us would be here 30 years, but that we're thinking that way. I think that's really important, that we keep that in the front of our mind. HVAC, we visited many of these units in different schools and saw a variety of age and look and performance quality. So there was some definite concerns about some of those maybe not operating the most efficiently. And what do we do for patchwork to get us more life, or is there a replacement needed? And then a lot of that we saw in Andy's report in August. Windows and doors, it was a rainy day, much like today. So while not ideal when we were outside or walking on the roof of Countrydale, what it did offer us is to see that the water does indeed pool in areas, does indeed leak in areas, does sit on window sills, they do tip indoors, there's seals around doors. So I think throughout the buildings, we had a pretty noticeable understanding of that taking place, specifically in some schools more than others, mostly the schools that we're going to talk about deeper, and a little bit with PRA. And then playgrounds was another piece we looked at, elementary-specific, but understanding of the differences. So we all saw that some of our elementaries have just one playground for all students. Some have that separate area for our early childhood. And then also, what does that look like, hard surface versus green surface? What is the surface under our playgrounds for safety? Are we meeting ADA expectations? And we definitely had some current concerns at some of those that we're not meeting those ADA pieces. We don't have play equipment that's necessarily geared to our youngest learners. And that safety, as far as fencing and accessibility, is a concern. In the area of safety and security, one area that we talked about was more so in the elementaries, those early learning classrooms, the bathrooms not being ADA compliant. So if we had a student in a wheelchair not being able to access them or have enough space, obviously a concern and something we want to get up to what the expectation is. Entrances were looked at often, especially in our, well, actually, in all the buildings we're in. So we talked about and had an understanding for some ADA compliance issues in some of the buildings, floor coverings for safety. So one of our schools in particular, we started out at Robinwood. Kids were sliding coming in. There wasn't proper floor coverings there to prevent, to be safe. We had kids falling down. And looking at what kind of rugs we have in some of those other elementary schools, are they best? And then the ramps, too, some of our doors, Pleasant View in particular, we had a long discussion there about the pitch of the ramp, is that the best access, and then also the different awnings outside of it. The CTE wing specifically at the high school, you'll see fall under two of our areas tonight. When it falls under safety and security, the concerns I think we all talked about and saw walking through was heating and cooling. Andy and Mitch, in particular, were able to share how some of those rooms didn't have any cooling on those really hot days we had. The ventilation is questionable in those spaces. And then also, secure entrances. We saw exactly how, where that might be a concern. Not fully outlined in here, but something that we have a short-term fix on now, but definitely something we want to look at with those spaces. Another area we broke down, and this is probably where we see the most feedback that we had through that, our time together, was in the educational and learning environments. So the first few are elementary-specific. We had pretty extensive conversations at most of our elementaries about the fact that our gym and our cafeteria are one space and that because of state requirements for PE and students needing it three times a week, that has stretched us to have to set up all of our elementary schedules, well, and most of our elementaries, I should say, to be all around our PE schedule and our lunch schedule, so putting academics as number two. And we had a strong conversation about how academics should lead that and not minutes needed in gym. That's important, but not, shouldn't be the lead. We should have space to accommodate that. Neighborhood schools, is I think what we kind of started calling it as we debriefed. We talked about, would we ever consider just a larger elementary school? And what it really drilled down to in me reviewing the notes and thinking about our conversation was, we like the size of our schools. They feel neighborhood. We have a neighborhood feel. People know their neighbors. They know the family and community they're with, and that means that they're three-sections. So in first grade, you have three classes, second grade, three. That's a three-section school and that we had a strong feeling that that's what we like and care for in Franklin. That's what makes us special and that feeling of community. And that also means typically close proximity to home, which we mostly see in our boundaries right now. Attendance areas came off of that discussion, too. So I think there was a common understanding that we don't want to have to look at boundaries more than once. So as we're thinking long-term and big, and we've taken on looking at our whole facility, that we're also thinking about, if we're going to have to redraw those attendance lines or boundaries, let's make decisions that minimize the amount of times. If best, we could do that once. That's ideal. We may not be able to do it not at all, but if we can minimize to once or less, that'd be better. We may not be able to do it not at all, but if we can minimize to once or less, that'd be better. The other noting for elementary schools is that Robinwood and Countrydale have more significant needs than some of our other schools, even with PV on the front of our minds today. So we've, Robinwood and Countrydale taking the lead on that. The CTE wing at the high school again comes up now in learning environments. So as you already know, when we kind of go over course selection, there's waiting lists for, I think every class, actually I could say, for the CTE courses. And there's areas where we could extend those pathways, but we simply can't because we don't have the space or the resources to do that. So it's limiting our students' experience, which is not really aligning with what we say when we're meeting all our students through our coherence plan. Also with that, there's a lack of natural lighting. A lot of those spaces are kind of more in like the basement of the school or maybe in that inner area where we have the windows that are like the top two feet of the area. So it's not a lot of natural light, not a lot of lab workspace, the machinery is on top of each other. So you have some concerns with space and with safety. And also what you see in a lot of programs with the CTE wing is that you're going to have a classroom adjacent to like the work lab. Like it's not all in the workspace, construction's going on, but then we also have a classroom where we are learning about construction and learning about tools. We have an autos lab, but then we also have a reasonable-sized classroom where we're learning about autos and able to like take our notes and dive into the books and that piece of it. We don't offer that right now with the space that we have, or if you've been at autos, I walked through last year when they were fixing small engines. And I literally like had grease, you know, because you're squeezing between machines and that's no exaggeration. And the kids were kind of squished in there and making the most of it, right? That's what they know, but that's kids to the max in that space and there's kids waiting to get into that space. So that's probably the biggest things that we saw with the CTE wing. And then we had an overall discussion as we were walking through, I think it was Countrydale at the time on furniture and just that we don't want our PTOs having to buy furniture or other GoFundMes. You know, we want it to be on a master furniture plan for the district. So working with Andy to create that and have that as our plan, but to make sure that we are looking at when is our furniture meeting our needs and when is it not and that that's on a rotation too. So then we got to our fourth area, and this is just through our debrief and discussions on the athletic activity space. There was some discussion from especially board members that have been on longer that remember the drawing that came up a few years ago with a, sorry, athletic space at the high school or fieldhouse. So resurfacing those drawings and what that looked like. So at that time, the conversations like I've had since then and before then is that was really just to look at a very isolated issue of could we get a fieldhouse? And what would we do just to get the pool operating? So I think keeping that scope in mind, we could resurface those drawings. But that was a very scoped spot they were looking at and we may want more than that, right? We talked about when we were in the pool area, we can only host dual events. We could never host a tournament. Same in our gym. We can't host a tournament. Can't hold all of our students in our gym that we have right now. When you talk about PE classes, we've already converted some classrooms to an extra PE space. We've seen the weight room, it's already a wall down to convert some classroom spaces. So we've made the most with what we have. But that there's some needs there for ventilation too, when you're thinking about the movement and work that's going on in that space and just the amount of kids that can be in it. So trying to get those to the ability to be competition space and hold more practices. This didn't come up as much in this conversation, but also I think it came up a bit as we walked through the elementaries. Like even tonight when we had to cancel all activities at PV, we would have had practices in that gym that are unrelated to PV until 9:30 tonight because they have Poms Junior coming in, they have high school Poms in there, they had a Lego League and something else as Andy and I were pulling up the schedule. So you know, that's every school and that's probably the smallest amount in a building. So just the stretches at the high school, but it's across the district. This slide really starts to talk about what were other things maybe that came up in the debrief that day, but this is also a combination of anything that's been, questions raised by anybody at this table since our last time together and looking into it. So we have land adjacent at Robinwood in Southwood Glen that's owned by the county. And so that is something we rent for a dollar. We do all the maintenance on it. So tree trimming, grass, there's a volleyball court across from Southwood Glen, like we work to try to keep that up. So there was a question about is there an MOU? Well, there's not really an MOU as there's not some agreement to like what we're doing with it, other than we're just able to use that land as we need. We talked about at that time reviewing the timing for the needs. So that's a big part of why PRA is with us tonight to relook at Countrydale, Robinwood High School in a little more detail. When are we at our target? When are we beyond our target enrollment? What does that look like? We had some questions about referendum money and impacts to the mill rate. That's going to come up more in upcoming meetings. So Andy will share more on the budget, obviously October 11th, and then for approval at the next October meeting. Then also in January, we added a school finance overview where we can really dive into just looking at what does that look like when we're talking about mill rate? When we're talking about potential referendum or past referendum dollars, which was a couple of questions that came up. We talked a lot about like what's next. I feel like I'm just getting a little bit at a time. Definitely not the intention. It's just a really big project and even I feel that way at times. So hopefully tonight you walk away looking at going, okay, we have like a plan with all these pieces for community, for board learning, for board planning. So that we're all set in that we know when those pieces are coming into what meetings. Because what we didn't talk a lot about yet that probably should have definitely led this, we know we're on our third year of the coherence plan and we're planning for our 24, 27 coherence plan, but that's who we are. That plan and like what we are doing for our learners, the environment we create for learning is who we are. This is what we need to do to support it. So really you'll see in those plans today, like the coherence pieces, it's beautiful that aligns this year with rebuilding and structuring that. Because we're right at that same moment to say, who really are we and how do we want that and envision that learning? And letting the coherence plan and that work drive a lot of it. So you'll see that built in. And then we talked about, it had come up like the high school property, is it even big enough for what we need that space to be? We'll start to see some of that tonight with PRA. It depends on what our needs are, but looking at that a bit. But then also in November, we're coming back again and doing some visioning, high school in particular, where we'll dive into that. Communication plan involving community we'll go through tonight. And then also there was some question about, are there any of our buildings that are difficult to work with in design? So I think that goes back to coherence plan. What's our dream of learning for students? What's our ideal? And then looking at our spaces to see, can they be adapted or do they already meet that? I think just when we think about walking through Forest Park versus our elementary schools, we could see some of those differences that maybe would be an example of what that could start to look like.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, for sure.
One inquiry I had that I think would be important is just the idea of especially with the buildings that need more addressing, is if we address their needs, will there still be sort of a differential in ongoing maintenance costs to some buildings versus another? Does that make sense to the group?
We talked about that a bit as a team too, and I think that we'll be able to tie that in through some of our work coming up. And it kind of will ebb and flow, right? Like as we make decisions on what we're going to do here, then we can understand what we can do in another place to maybe get that longer life out of it. But yeah, we'll note that down too. Any other questions or thoughts right now?
Before we go further, we did mention PV and maybe Andy Daniels, you'll know the answer to this question. Was what happened today because we've had three inches of rain in the last couple of days, because the building is old and something happened to it? Or something that was completely unexpected?
Was this on your list?
And nothing we could have done.
Talk all about it. No, it was not because of the rain. Okay. It was sewer. It was 60-year-old sewer piping. So wastewater piping. It just started backing up. What's happening is that piping is deteriorating. And essentially if you picture piping, the inside's deteriorating and starting to flake off. The flakes don't just come off. They hang there. And when they hang there, they grab things. And they grabbed what you can imagine and basically backed it up into the lower level. So it was on the list as far as scoping it. It's laid out in the plans for most of the buildings to actually go in and do some cameras. We were able to do that today. I have some wonderful video of that. But that's what's happening. So now I put it, just for Pleasant View, I put a new line item in that because now we know we have to address that. It's about a $250,000 repair is what I put in the plan because there's two options we can do. We can reline those piping, that piping. But the piping's not pitched the way it used to be. So even relining it could be an issue. We might have to just dig it all up and then, you know, relay it really. So, but I'll need to do some more investigation and it's not like I can turn that around today anyway. So it's going to be something that's right there. That's just a good example of how something became a priority one just in four hours ago. So.
I'm just pleased that the fact that you had the scoping project on the list, right? So it took us by surprise today, but it wouldn't have taken us by surprise after whatever timeframe you have it on. So that's the good thing.
Yep. So we don't have to scope it, at least that area. It probably came in a lot cheaper than what's on the plan. So, thank you.
Can we get a board special on scoping?
Leaving the area all the time.
Sorry. We're going to digress or GI?
No, no.
Sorry, yeah, we can just continue on. I just wanted to.
All right. Andy Daniels is going to walk us through this slide about the facility needs, a little bit of review of last time.
Yeah. So during that board tour, obviously we handed out the entire plan, which as we know has changed a little bit since we've met. So you have the plan. You'll see, you know, the priorities are broken down, zero to two years, three to five years, six to 10 years. These were the facilities that had the biggest or largest amount of capital needs. So nothing's changed from the original plan that we've given you in August or presented on in August, but it has changed. I just wanted to touch on because I know this question did come up a little bit since that August presentation. But how did we decide what was a priority, not just what fell in zero to two years, but also like, why did it fall there, right? So no matter what priority level it was, we still asked ourselves kind of the same questions. And the questions were, what is it? What's the life expectancy? What's the functionality? Does it have increasing repairs? And what's the availability of parts of each system? As we know, parts are becoming obsolete. So as we answered those questions, that's how we took some of these projects and placed them into those priorities. And then also consideration was given to the educational impact. If a system failed, what would that cause? What would be the impact to our educational learning environments? Again, another good example of what happened today. So I just wanted to touch on that, but again, there was a lot of common things that we saw across all the buildings, specifically for these reasons. It was the roofing, the mechanicals, some concrete, which is really safety and security. ADA falls into that because of some concrete issues. A specific example that you guys may recall is some of our exits out of like Robinwood and they leave even Countrydale, exits right out on the grass. You know, that's no longer meets code for egress. So while we focused a lot and we see a lot of talk about roofing and mechanicals and all that, we can't like ignore the ADA, the safety and security like Annalee talked about a little bit earlier. And just even like some of the flooring issues that we saw, there's just a lot in there. But again, most of the capital is the four, the four big ones and really five if we count fire systems. So that's really all I had for the slide is just to really bring back what's in those priorities and how we developed those or decided on what fell into our priorities. So.
Any questions for Andy? This is power slide tonight. Then Devin Kack and Paige Cedar with us tonight from PRA. Going to talk a little bit about that enrollment piece a little deeper and have some charts to go with it from last time we were together.
Yeah, thanks, Ms. Bennen. At the last meeting, right, so we were presented in August with Andy Roffers' report and Mark was here. And he shared out a whole bunch of data. So we want to jump into a little bit more of that data specifically around Countrydale, Robinwood and the high school, which has been addressed. Because we as a planning team, we're also curious about, okay, where exactly are those thresholds? Where are, what's more of a target year that the district and from a planning standpoint that we're welcoming more kids? So let me step back before I step forward. The graph that you're seeing, right, so all the information that we're presenting is from Roffers. We just expanded upon it with a little bit more detail from him. You're seeing all the buildings within the district. Again, there's no concern at the middle school. The numbers in, let me start by saying, capacity of a school building is a qualitative analysis, right? So there's a number of variables that go into it. There's more detail when you go into a middle school and a high school than you would at an elementary school. From a planning metric for an elementary school, you don't, and for no building, do you plan it out for, to have the exact number of kids in every single seat in the building? Because we know that there's fluctuation, there's bubble, there's waves of students of births within a community and then which go through a school building. So in elementary school, we calculate a maximum capacity and then we take out 10% and that's the target capacity. So that 10% is what allows you to absorb some of those waves of enrollment, whether it's going above the target line or below the target line. And you'll see that tonight. So the, when we are approaching the target capacity or above the target capacity, those numbers are in yellow on the chart. When we're going over the maximum building capacity, and again, there's variables in that, that's when you're seeing that red number. So again, specifically at Countrydale. If you could advance though.
Sorry.
That's all right. You're good. So Countrydale, right, so on that chart on the previous slide, that was the only school that we saw that hit that maximum capacity. And we understand that is largely based on the geographic area, the attendance boundary of Countrydale, right? So I just, it's in green. It's much bigger than all the other schools, right? That's where all the developable land is available to the community. So what Mark Roffers did, right, he understands all the demographics and the per pupil, which could be expected from all of the housing developments and whatnot. And we take that line and we extrapolate that. So in gray, on the bottom of the chart, that is students up to the target capacity. And then in yellow, that area is above the target, going to maximum then in red. Does that make sense? I'm confusing myself, right? Okay, okay. So key indicators on this line, there's a couple, right? First is, you know, we're seeing the enrollment in the solid line. That's kind of a wave. And we've even gone up to that target enrollment line, it looks like in 17, 18. And then you can see where it says sixth to FPMS, right? That's when we took sixth graders out and we were able to open the door on the new middle school. So that allowed the enrollment of that building to go down and be comfortably actually below even the target capacity. Then 22, 23 is highlighted with a vertical line. It looks like we're going to get back to, and again, everything beyond today is just projected, right? We will get back to the target capacity in about the school year 27, 28. And it looks like about four, five years later, as we approach 2031, 2032, that's when we, that's when we should be expected to start to go over that maximum capacity at Countrydale. And again, the, will it be exactly that? No, absolutely not. And Mr. Roffers sat right here and said the exact same thing, right? This is the projection based on all the housing starts that are available. So, but you can see how it continues to grow and what that need is within that attendance boundary.
I know you have one more slide about Robinwood in terms of enrollment over time. So my overarching question is, is there's no cumulative slide of all the elementary schools? And so the reason I ask that is, could we just re-boundary our way out of this problem?
I believe that Mr. Roffers said that that was, that was a solution. But I think longer term, it's not with the amount of space within the attendance boundary of Countrydale.
It bought us a couple of years. I could even send the follow-up data on that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Mike. Annalee, do you want to jump back one slide? So here we can actually, we get an aggregate total. If you look at the, the third column from the right, in 2040, 41, you can see the grades 4K through five totals. So that yellow square right there, 2585, that's when we're eclipsing the target enrollment for all the buildings combined.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on Countrydale? Okay, we'll jump to Robinwood.
Can I ask?
Yeah.
You know, with the possibility of an additional elementary school, how does that change the planning for Countrydale? Because if you're thinking, okay, you know, you have such a big of land which can, on which new homes will be built up, you know. on which new homes will be built up, you know, community moving in. So taking into consideration a possible elementary school, which you have the land, it's kind of, you know, how does that change the dynamic of the projection of Countrydale?
Yeah, any, any attendance boundary that you would take away? You know, if we're just talking about kind of redistricting a portion of Countrydale? Yeah, dramatically would reduce the enrollment at Countrydale. But it's all dependent on where that line is drawn and also what the housing starts, how many new homes have been built. And then even then, that can be a potentially a shorter-term solution as we look at just the amount of available land. Because the land that you might absorb right now to make sure that Countrydale stays within the target capacity, that will, right, that's going to change over time as there's more and more housing starts that come up within that undeveloped land.
Have the, because the land which we have at Ryan Road and, you know, how far it is from Countrydale? Will that help us kind of, because I'm kind of just thinking is that,
Right.
okay, you know, how, because Countrydale is an older school, we know that, it needs a lot of work, you know? So way to put, you know, the resources for the future, that's it.
Yeah, no, we want to take all of that into account and make sure that we're doing this with a holistic approach and not just that, you know, well, that looks good, right?
Thank you.
I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but Mr. Roffers also said not it's not only housing starts and new housing and new subdivisions, but it's the houses that are currently here that are going to be having more families and more, more students.
Correct, so as the older generations, right, their, their kids have graduated, they're finishing out their careers, maybe they're choosing to retire somewhere else. Then typically, new families come in and they'll have a number of children with them, or once they move into those homes, and then, yeah, then the, kind of the whole cycle starts over again.
All right. So speaking on Robinwood's enrollment impact now. Just looking back at the past data, Robinwood was functioning at that maximum capacity for a couple of years prior to moving students over to Forest Park. But the projections for the future are looking much more stable, kind of following right below that line of the target capacity. So from an enrollment standpoint, Robinwood is not looking concerning. But as you know, with all of the needs for the maintenance and just educational quality of spaces, this is another reason why this one's being looked at.
I thought of another question. If you were to look at going back to the Countrydale slide and that projected, the projected enrollment, let's say like in 4041, when we get up to 870 students, if we want, if we want to keep, what's the max number of students we, we are wanting at a school? If we're saying we only want three sections of each grade, what's that number?
I don't know, off the top of my head, I can tell you in a minute though. Was Andy, is it up the top of his head?
40, 75.
Like 75 in a grade.
75.
46, I think.
46?
46.
450s, 3K, 5, plus then you add 4K, depending on how many 4Ks and if he switched a full day ever.
Okay, thanks. I'm not going to answer any of my own math questions. That was really good.
All right. Any other questions on Robinwood's enrollment?
Well, it just kind of begs my last question, which is, Robinwood probably doesn't have as much land, but only looking at a projected enrollment of plus nine?
Yes, yeah, so Robinwood's boundaries have a lot of homes, it's pretty well-built out. So it's really just changing of families, so the projection in this area. He does a much more deep analysis on cost of homes in the certain neighborhoods and what type of families would be moving into those homes. So I think that impacts those numbers.
I know, I think one of the presentations I remember, he mentioned about the new apartments which are coming opposite target. I think the number of apartments, it takes 10 apartments, homes to get one student as compared to, there was some ratio, I remember, four, four homes to one student, something like that.
I don't, I'd, I'd want to go back to the Roffers' report specifically, but I do remember him saying very clearly that everyone assumes multi-unit buildings bring lots of kids, and it's not the case.
He had sort of different ratios for every home type and every one, because he said we have what, 87 different neighborhoods? Yeah, and so there was a different ratio for each one of those neighborhoods, for each home age, so it was very, yeah.
Yeah, the general apartment or kind of multifamily, it says .05 students per, so it'd be 20 units for one student was the, was the ratio he had used, so, quite a few.
Because I, I think at 76 and Rosson also, you'll be getting a lot of multifamily units, like in apartment, bigger apartment complex, which is coming up in two years' time.
And he took that into consideration.
Yeah. I think that's where he said it was .05.
Yeah.
That, that was a specific to that 76 and Rosson development possibility.
So we can move on to the high school. So as you see from the chart here, the high school's actually been functioning at a little bit above target capacity since about 2015, 16 school year. So this isn't too uncommon for high schools. This is where you start to, once you're in this target capacity, you know, you can function, but you start to feel those pressures in the spaces. And as you know, this, this chart doesn't take into consideration educational needs. So though there are as many spaces as you need for the number of students you have, it doesn't mean that the gym is large enough. It doesn't mean that the collaboration spaces are there or other spaces for functional modern learning. So it's looking to project to the 2040 school year about halfway between the target capacity and max.
So I guess big takeaway for the high school is, right, we're, we're functioning above the target, but I, I still think we're within a good limit to that target. Because if you, doing, doing, doing my own math, which is bad also, for the 2040, 41 school year, we're projected about 1,680 students. The building capacity as it sits today is 1,900 and basically 60 students. So we're like 300 kids away, students away still, right? So there's, there's a lot of flux. And this takes into account all of that pressure at, at Countrydale specifically. So that's all, you know, those students are now arriving. Some of those students, once we've gone above the maximum capacity, are beginning to potentially arrive even at the high school here. And again, to Paige's point before is, we haven't begun to look at, you know, what is that CTE space? What are the activities and athletic spaces too? As any new space might come online, that would also then add to the capacity of the building, then giving us more flexibility within that yellow range. You also might ask yourself, why is this yellow area so much bigger than the elementary schools? I mentioned at the elementary school use a 90% factor. At a high school, because kids are moving around so much, we actually go down to an 80% utilization factor. At a middle school, it's 85. So it, it meets the kids, how they are moving around and using the building. And different AP courses and all that kind of stuff, that, that varies per semester, year to year and so on.
And I'll just note for reference by, between now and 2040, those are all kids we know of today, right? So from that point on, basically, we're starting to project out kids that aren't born yet, right? So this is really just based on the data of the students we have in the district now on their way to the high school, which we're seeing an upward trend already of, and the potential for more growth and more families and more kids in the community to come. So I think that upward trend line, you could healthily dash that out, continue in the same direction going forward.
So when you say capacity, it means you can't squish another chair in, or it's a fire? What is capacity exactly? You know, I mean, you don't want teachers with 60 kids in a room, obviously, but, and, and I, I agree with everything that, that we're talking about, you know, we need more space, we need more opportunities. But what is capacity exactly measure?
It, it all starts with the student-teacher ratio, right? How many kids should be in a classroom? So capacity could change if the board all of a sudden said, no, well, we want to change the guideline to be 32 kids in every single high school class, or 40 kids in every, right, you're not, but, right? So that can drastically change that capacity number. So we know, and commonly, there is not a board policy on student-teacher ratio. So we use a planning metric that's agreed upon by the, the leadership team and use that to understand and develop the numbers that you're seeing today.
Yeah, really good question. It's not a building capacity, it's not a code compliance capacity. You could fit way more people in that building than this number suggests. We never want to teach that many people in that building. So this is really focused on creating ideal learning environments that align with all the goals of achievement within the district.
I see, thank you.
I keep going back to this, this slide and my attempt at math. You know what would be helpful is to, to think about capacity and just in terms of classrooms or grades, I don't know.
Yeah.
Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So for next time.
Is, is the idea like, okay, how many of, well, just how many classrooms do we have in each of our buildings? And then you can just assign a 25 or 28 or?
Yeah, kind of like that, because it's hard for me to envision, well, could some of that over, how much of that overage at Countrydale could be absorbed into other schools in a safe and responsible manner?
Yeah. I think the, I think, I think what she's asking is, we have five elementary schools now, and even if those elementary schools aren't the same elementary schools, do we, do we need, in 2040, do we need six?
Or do we need?
Or do we still, or do we still need?
Five and one's huge.
Or do we need, or do we still need five? Yeah, it's a great question, and that actually queues us up well when we're going to talk schedule and next steps in a little bit. But next month, we're going to be back to talk about elementary school specifically. And one of the goals was to create a model elementary school. The ideal, you asked about three-section total, what would that be? With that as a basis, how are we creating equitable environments across the district with that as a target? And that exact question, how does that overlay into that? So it's a great dialogue, and the hope is to come back and, and maybe we can prep some of the numbers to, to fill the gaps here.
Thank you.
As part of that, yep.
Any other questions for this crew? Otherwise, we're going to start to kind of look at what are our guiding principles, like what does that look like? So really, we're bringing back that data and looking at enrollments. So any other questions on those pieces? Like Mike said just very well, like the visioning piece is going to come next, and we'll start to pull some of those numbers in, and we can accommodate that any way needed. So we'll move into the guiding principles. So we've talked a bit about guiding principles, and these are, this is kind of the verbiage that goes along with like, why are we doing what we're doing as the coherence plan, right? Like, what is learning about, what do we strive for, what's our ideal here? And how, and then how do we also look at, you started to see the draft of the profile of a graduate. Those are two big documents that we're really using when we're thinking about, how do we want to look at all our spaces? So we've seen the physical spaces, what do we look for them to ideally be? The guiding principles are really putting the words to that. So these are the things that we should be able to lean back on as we're all taking on these difficult conversations and deciding next steps. But they really are leaning off of these two main documents and purpose. So I'm going to walk through the guiding principles. It's on a variety of slides, but in the, in your blue folders, it's also the document that's got some nice color on it, if you just want to see them in one spot. There's about six or seven of them in total. They're going to fall into those same areas that we talked about and reflected on our buildings when we did the school tour. So as we think back to the debrief at the beginning of this, a half hour ago or so, these are the same areas. So when we're looking at the guiding principles and learning environment in particular, what you're going to notice on this slide is just for organization and functionality, bottom left corner of the slide, anything in that gold coherence plan is language directly out of our current coherence plan. That when Dr. Mo and I and the team talk about, and all of us making and working towards the adjustments for the next plan, those are words that are likely going to stay with us, that's the, that's in our functionality and who we are. And then also the, anything in the green is profile of a graduate and looking at language that's coming from those pieces. The all schools in the bottom right, in this case, it's showing that this guiding principle in particular pertains to all of our schools. And sometimes you might see that that just is the elementary schools, and at other times you might see that's just the high school. So just for your wondering in those bottom areas, what that looks like. So first ones, yep, go ahead.
You know, right now, the goal of having three, two, four sections in a grade, to be a, towards the community of elementary school, you know? But if we look at the geography of Franklin, the way one area is so underdeveloped and a huge need of possible students, you know, from that area, do you think we will be, still be able to stick, stick to the three, two, four sections? But if we, for one possible elementary school, or we'll have to have one big, five small and one big elementary school to accommodate that kind of area from a budget and, you know, financial perspective wise?
Yeah, I think if you're asking like, would we have five smaller that are three-section, would we ever consider like a five-section elementary that's larger? I think like anything can be on the table at this point in time. The guiding principles are kind of starting to look at, and we'll go through these, like if we really adhere to liking that neighborhood feeling and kind of knowing the community of where we live and those families that we go to school with through that elementary experience, if we make that a guiding principle, it's saying that's something that we would like to adhere to and hold to. So really, it's at this table and to put to our community eventually, potentially, like, what would we want that to be? So it's not to say it couldn't be, it would just be something we want to talk about. Yeah, Andy?
This analogy, as I'm, as I'm kind of listening, keeps going through my head. This is kind of like a big gigantic knot in a ball of yarn, right? So you've all seen one, or if you've ever fished, or taken your kids fishing, you know what that's like, right? It looks like a total mess, which it is right now. And you start to pull on the line, or you start to pull the string apart, and sometimes you get another knot over here, or sometimes you get a knot over there. But if you start to take your time, which we're going to see with the Gantt chart, and start to think your way through the problem, eventually you start taking it apart, right? And that's, maybe that decision comes as I pull on a different line. Or we're, we talk about the athletic spaces, or we talk about the CTE spaces. Those are just different lines on that string that at some point will be able to unwrap, and it's going to be a straight line again. And we're going to be able to figure out what the problem is. So like, all, all the questions that are being asked, they're all really good, they're just part of the knot. And they're, at some point, will be pulled on and we'll get it going in the right direction. Right now, it just feels like this big thing there, so we just have to take our time, work the problem, and at some point, we'll come up with that solution. But that kind of analogy was just circling through my head of, like every time we pull on one string, we're getting a tighter knot over here, and then I pull on it over there, and I just tighten this one over here. So we just got to like, take our step back, work through it, and we'll get to that solution at the end.
Work the program. The problem, it's a process. I think that's a good way of saying it, Andy. I appreciate that you didn't compare it to a car. It's getting tired of that analogy. All right.
And I'll just echo, I mean, I think the goal of the guiding principles, you've heard a lot about needs in August. You toured the building, saw more needs. We've looked at the needs from a capacity standpoint, as we just talked about. So needs have started to formalize pretty clearly. We started some dialogue about how do you respond to those? What do solutions look like? Board members had some good questions and ideas in the past dialogue, and other good question just now. This team's got lots of ideas on how to respond to that. These guiding principles really become the filter we run those through, right? Are we achieving these things? Are, are going to a school of that size? Does that support this as a guiding principle? So that way, when we come out on the back end with a master plan, that it falls in line, we can point to how it's solving for, or improving, or untangling the knots as we work through each one of these. So this is really important work, because it gives the guidance to this team on how best we can support the district in, in responding to those.
So next guiding principle, it's actually two on this slide that we're looking at. So again, understanding those bottom columns, we're looking at now, learning environment and how that guides our thinking for the elementary schools as we move forward and helps our team, all of us, as we're in this decision-making process. So again, color coding to coherence plan and profile of grad, but pulling in a lot of that language. This is to your question, Max, where we start to get into a guiding principle about fostering that community feel in those buildings that are defined by sections, and looking at that and ownership of each learner's success and that being maybe better and more effectively communicated at that size school. Also, the commitment to strategically scheduling. So the second one is really putting into words, what is it that we want to guide our scheduling? And if we're really looking at our coherence plan, and we're saying we are charged by our academics and our gaps and our engagement, can we do that if where our PE lands in the day drives when we're going to have ELA? day drives when we're going to have ELA, and maybe when somebody's available to support on that? So that second guiding principle is really looking at that piece. Like, we want to stand behind a schedule that's driven by academics and student needs versus structure of a building. Next one, in learning environment, so paying attention to the bottom right corner. So now we're looking at Franklin Sabres, we're just talking high school. So in this one, it's that whole piece of creating those program experiences that are for our education, for employment, and career readiness. So when we talk about the CTE wings, what is it about CTE that we're looking for? What's guiding that work? Is that we say we have all these experiences, and that all kids have exposure, or can develop through a pathway? Do we have the environment that creates the opportunity for that? When we look at safety and security, again, looking at all schools, this is really protocol-based, right? We're looking at what's secure entrances, what is ADA compliance, how are we creating an equitable environment that serves our entire community? Another one was safety and security, again, for our elementary schools in this case, is that whole piece that we saw with playgrounds. As we talked and debriefed with our walk, it really kind of came to the top. And I would say, if I was to predict that day going in, in our conversations, I wasn't quite there yet in my mind. But after those conversations, it really made sense that if we're saying play-based is part of learning, which it is in our social, emotional world for our students, then are we creating the environment, again, that that can happen in a safe way, where they can grow and adapt with boundaries? Infrastructure, looking at all of our schools. So, you know, this is a little bit exposed with our PV thing today and scoping, but on a bigger scale, like, what is our HVAC replacement look like? How are we making sure that things like today don't happen at Pleasant View, so that we don't have to interrupt learning? How are we staying on top of those, and what are those protocols that we want to have in place? Mary had a great email she sent in the last couple days, too, just in looking at, like, what's our air quality? So when we're looking at these HVAC systems, and we're looking at our different handlers and things, I might kind of pretend to know all the terms. So Andy, feel free to interject, but one of our guiding pieces wants to be that we're creating that healthy, reliable school where learning can take place uninterrupted. And this one, again, really looking at our high school and our facilities. So a little bit revisiting what, as a board, you may have looked at and seen a sketch on earlier, but now taking it a little bit further. At that time, it was, what if we did enough to fix the pool, and then added a field house? And now it's looking at, what is that really, what do we really want from that? Do we just want a fixed pool, or do we want to be able to say we're Division One, we can host events, we can host tournaments, that we can have all of our students together, to have not only those assembly-type things during the day where all of our students can attend, but even those events in the evening that are extracurricular? And what does that space look like?
Can I just, so, just kind of going back to what Jackie said at the beginning, where teachers are leaving, you know, the district, everywhere, obviously, but if we can make Franklin a destination for all of these reasons, hopefully, we can be a place where teachers want to come, that we can pay well, but that it's also feels like community, that it feels like pride, that it feels like we are invested. And this all kind of, as one, hopefully, would attract those teachers and want them to make them live here and raise their families here. So hopefully, it can have just a domino effect.
Absolutely. That's a really good way of saying it, Mary. So that's the guiding principles. Like I said, they're on the one pager in your folder, too, because I figured they'll be on your refrigerator to guide you. But, yeah, wherever it works for you, right? Any questions or anything we want the team to consider further, or something that you thought of in the inquiries, the debriefs that we had, that you didn't see represented through this visioning kind of process of who we are and what we want to start to guide our work? Then we're going to go into the really exciting part. We start using larger paper, we know life has gotten good. So, yeah, your larger piece that didn't fit in your folder, like me, you didn't want to crease in it, is really looking at, I'm sorry, it jumped on us, a Gantt chart. So if you're not familiar with a Gantt chart, it's really taking, if you have projects and overlay happening, a Gantt chart really gives you that visual to look at, like, what pieces are coming into play, where, what overlaps, at what time. And really, for us, we tried to look at a very purposeful way of laying out, kind of categorized in three ways. So what are the pieces that are board learning? So that's partnered with our district staff and our other, our partners that are with us tonight, and C.D. Smith, and M.D. Roffers. Then there's the parts in gold on the Gantt chart. I understand it's hard to see up there, and I apologize for people in the audience. I know we have hard copies in front of some of us. Darlene does have a couple extra hard copies, maybe we could pass around. But the gold pieces are board planning. So now it's really, those are the pieces that our active people at the table, our board members, our all of us, starting to put all of this together, or, as Andy would say, unwinding that fishing line and starting to see how it works. And then the pieces that are in black are community engagement. So we had, it had come up in lots of our conversations over the last month or more, like, how do we engage our community, and what does that look like? Well, it's very purposeful, right? It's a long process, but it's very purposeful in how things come along. So as we're looking at this, you'll see it goes back to last February already. That first piece was just the master facility study, coming through August, as we finally were getting all the pieces together, everybody was able to do their part in our partnerships, and bring that to the board. And it brings us into where we're at now. So you start to see that that master facility study is coming into that Franklin Forward. Like, what is Franklin Forward? Who are we moving forward, and what do we want to do with this data? So over these next number of months, and you'll see the exact pieces that fall in that gold bar in a minute in the timeline, but that chunk of time, from now through, like, end of January, is really us working to engage in this study and continue the questions tonight, and digging a little bit deeper, and unwinding that ball of fishing line a little bit more, to get us closer to, when we get to looking at this, the first dark, darker box, the black box on here, the community engagement, like, January to April. Now we're starting to get into, our whole goal being, we know we have all this, we know our regular operating budget and what we put into buildings and grounds isn't going to maintain the list of things we said we need, and it doesn't help us reach our ideal. So our goal is to get to survey, right? To figure out, what do we want to start to survey our community on, to think about what we do with this information? What are they thinking about? What are they having an appetite for? Getting that information back to us through a survey, then decide what to do. So that's what you're seeing with community engagement. At that time, that's listening sessions, going into a survey, that's coming out with a survey. The piece you see in black before that, the key communicators, that's going to be our first opportunity in front of a group of community members. That key communicator group's up to about 50 now, includes a variety of people from the community. And that's where we'll dive into the coherence plan again. We'll start to gain feedback for next steps of coherence plan, and what is the community see as our ideal, and where we want our goals to be, to make sure that that's fitting within these guiding principles we've created, or that we need to adjust. And then we're going to get into the coherence plan development, you see, running the whole gamut of this year, and hopefully, you're hearing tonight, like, how that balances and fits in, that really drives what we're doing, even though we started with facilities, we know the coherence plan is our piece. And then working towards, like I said, trying to get to that survey. When we look at the timeline, it breaks those chunks out. So the color coding does match. My brain works that way, I apologize if yours doesn't. But hopefully, you start to see that the things that are in black, highlighted on the timeline, are the same pieces you would see falling into those dark zones on the Gantt chart. Gantt chart gives you that bigger overview. The timeline gives you, like, the who, the what, the where, the when. So we have a number of board meetings coming up. So the next time we're together, key communicators, going through profile of a grad, coherence plan, pulling together some of this, starting to lay some language of, we have a facility piece coming. If I jump to our next key communicator, that's on February 5th. At that point, we're going to be ready for listening sessions in our community to hear about the facilities and hear what they're thinking about as we develop a survey. Key communicators will be, like, our first group to hear that. PRA and our team, C.D. Smith will be with us that night, and Mike Hacker. And then following that, we'll have a series of those listening sessions with the community. I know that came up a few times, like, when do we do them in the community? That's the big chunk right there. Prior to that time leading up, it's part of that gray space yet, so that learning together. We learned a lot last month, we learn more tonight. So the elementary school visioning will be October 25th board meeting, so PRA will be a big lead on that again, with the rest of our partners to talk about. Mike Hacker said it perfectly, right? Like, what does that ideal elementary school look like? What do those numbers look like? Classrooms, things like that. We come back on November 8th, similar activity, similar people, but now looking at the high school. So let's look at that visioning piece, what does that look like for the high school? So a lot of learning there. December 6th board meeting, we come back, just Mo leads us through our mid-year coherence plan, but also some exercise in building towards the next. Everything will always be layered this year with coherence plan. Here's where we're at, and where do we aspire to go with that? And then we have that facilities work study as a board that we put on the calendar for December 13th. That's when we really get in, and you see it turn gold, because now, we're taking all of this, that really wound-up ball, I love that, Andy, and now we're starting to, like, pull apart, and we're starting to talk about, what does that look like? And what is this piece here, and if we do this? And a lot of those questions we have, but with, you know, hopefully, a very developed understanding of where things are and what visioning can look like. When we come back together in January, that school finance piece, I referenced it a bit at the front end of tonight, but that's looking at, really, you know, what does referendum debt look like? What does that look like going forward? Mill rate, how does it have effects on that? It's just going to be a deeper dive on that piece, because there's been some curiosity around that, and that seemed to be good timing at that point, because then we're getting into February, where we're starting to do the community listening sessions, starting to get that feedback as we build the survey. And then our next work study together would be February 28th, that's the date we worked on to get on the calendar. There, we're looking at survey, bringing forth, like, draft survey, getting all of our input to continue to look at that, and then coming back again in March to kind of finalize that work, and the goal of putting a survey out to our community by April. And on the backside of that, internally, we're at the same time working on getting out bids for who we're going to work with as a survey company, so that somebody, another partner that we would bring on, that we would be introducing to everybody around that time, prior to February. So then the work moves forward, we have the survey out there in April, we're working on finding that date, I think Darlene touched base with a few of you yet tonight, to get that date in May, because at that point, we'll have our survey results. Where our survey partner is by that time will be with us to present those results, we digest those results, we come back in June, and then we start to talk about, what's the board resolution decision? And we have a series of opportunities there. Really, the big thing on us, I'm always like, what's the target goal out there, and the pieces that get there? Target goals that get to survey. The pieces out there, I think, are pretty laid out, and kind of hopefully helps you gain some necessity to why we put those extra dates on the calendar, and why we will get to see each other often. So any questions on the Gantt chart, or the timeline, or just kind of next steps? It's really what we had together for tonight. The slides are really just pinpointing the things you already saw. Like, these are the exact pieces that we come around in the next months, kind of leading us up to winter break.
Is the REC building kind of folded into this, or is that an entirely different entity? Or where does that all fall?
It's not...
All these meetings?
Yeah, it is. No, REC building will come back through, it'll come back through board meetings, and that's separate, it's not folded into this.
Okay, thank you.
It's looking at some of our community funding and things.
When you talk about a survey company, that's like a whole new person that's not using the Qualtrics stuff that we have already for when we do parent surveys, it would be a totally different...
Yeah, usually hire districts that have success with, like, doing these surveys to see where a community wants to go. Yeah, are bringing in a company that's professional in that area. It's really helping you put together those survey questions and things. Go ahead, Devin.
Yeah, if you can think back to when we did work on the middle school, so we actually used a survey company, and that's what actually led to the community saying, you should go ahead and, you know, take the investment of a couple more million dollars, right? And just build a new one, so that students in the existing forest park, they didn't live through all of middle school under construction, and just end up in a cleaner result for everybody, preserve teaching and learning throughout that whole process and all that, so.
Yeah, and there is value in considering a third party for that, not just for the expertise, as was noted, but also to be a third party. It's an unbiased opinion. If an outcome is to take next steps beyond the survey, and the board elects to do so, ideally, we can point community members back to that entity as the team that helped validate the, kind of, the process to build the survey, how the questions were asked, and then the results of that. So there is value in having a third-party entity, I think, support that.
Any other thoughts or questions, or...
No, thank you for this very organized plan.
I think it's, I mean, it's a problem, it's a ball, it's a fishing, I don't fish, but you know what I mean? But I think it's a really exciting kind of problem to have, like, if we're going to, I think it's a great opportunity for us to, as you keep calling it Franklin Forward, Forward Franklin, whatever, to move us forward. I think, I appreciate all the work that everyone has done so far, and it's exciting to think about where we're going.
I have a laminator at home, if anyone wants me to laminate.
I don't know if we have one in this building, I would offer it. It's a good question. I'll also link all these in the Friday update, so that you have them digitally if that's what you prefer.
Yeah.
All right, does anybody have any further questions, comments? Thank you very much, everyone. Does anybody have any board liaison reports? I did meet with Mr. Anderson, and he'll be back in the next meeting to talk about the community, community and rec and that study, and I look forward to hearing from him and what that's, what that's going to bring in the next couple of months when we talk about community and rec. Anybody else? All right, school and community engagement reports. Obviously, we're all at the parade tonight, or several of us were. Lucky we didn't have to build an ark. Instead, we got to go with Debbie's son, his sheep. Anybody else, community?
Well, that's right, his name is Noah. That's perfect.
Sorry, it took me a minute.
I know. There's been a lot of things happening, and I mean, again, I just think it's fun to be out and about in the district, whether it's, you know, a football game, or a swim dive meet, marching man competition, adjusted, indoors. You know, I just think there's a lot of, you can walk around anywhere in Franklin, any of our buildings, and just see a lot of activities happening, lots of scouting groups and sports teams at all different levels, and I think it's fun to have everybody back in the groove.
I agree. And homecoming this week, and homecoming game Friday night.
Yes, sir.
And the band will be playing at halftime.
Yes, they will.